Welcome you all to the meeting tonight and at 7:5, so let's call the meeting to order. I ask you to join me in the Pledge of Leadership. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take roll call, please?
Ms. Hammond.
Here.
Mary Lambert.
Here.
Mike Connell.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Chad Fuller.
Here.
Jake Puffer.
Here.
Ms. Delito.
Looking now for approval of the agenda.
I move the agenda being adopted as printed.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The council meeting minutes of July 18th need approval.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the July 18th, 2024 regular meeting.
Sir.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passes. Moving now to our pre-approved reports, and Bob Porter has the awards for Best Face Forward on Perry's Pride. Bob?
Alright, so Best Face Forward. Warner was, what, 351 Green Regina and Mark Honeycutt, or they're there. And then second place was 373 Green Gina Deanna Shaw. Fourth place, 312 Mel Meadowdale Corey, I don't know how to pronounce that name, Switson Switlawski. And 408 Lamb Tina Jensen. So, yeah. Take picture or no?
I did bring my phone. Megan.
Megan's on her way. You're asking. But you can still do good job and keep your house up.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it.
Move this way.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, so for our businesses, it was the building that used to be the banks of Central Pharmacy and PFCEU. Is anyone here from them? Megan's waiting in the wings.
I was gonna say PFCEU.
PFCEU.
I mean, I can hold both, but.
Alright, I'll do this.
Can you turn yours down a little bit? It was wearing.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you.
We appreciate all everybody does to make their places look so nice. We'll move into public comment, but seeing as how we've got kind of a full room tonight, I just want to remind everybody that the limitation on individual people speaking is five minutes, and that is from our rules and procedure. So, anyone that would like to speak to whatever reason you're here for will speak during public comment, and then if there is in further into the agenda, an item that addresses that, that's when we'll respond. So you have five minutes, just give us your name, please.
You'll forgive me if I didn't know for sure about your rule of five minutes, so I prepared much comments, probably a little more longer than that, and I apologize.
Either shorten it up or talk fish.
I am giving my very best. Giving my very best.
Alright. And your name?
So.
Your name?
My name is Christopher Methan. I live down at the exact opposite end of Green Street here from City Hall.
Yep.
So, first start with me, we're liberty and justice for all, our federal lead right beginning of all this. Think we should keep that in mind. Keep that in mind.
Chris, what are you here for? I mean, you've got five minutes.
Let me get to that. Liberty. Liberty. Recently, several residents in this town have been told to evict their chickens. I find that that poor. Do you see? When we moved here and we thought about getting chickens, we called City Hall and asked for approval, because we looked up the rule that said with approval. Now, I've heard that's changed, but we called nonetheless. Maybe it wasn't that way to say that, that's fine, but we did call and had a conversation where we were told as long as they were kept inside, whatever that meant. We took that to mean no free raking, but we did call, we did our diligence. We looked up and made sure that we used every rule we could. Just in space, accommodations, care, the whole nine yards. Did everything we could. Had a conversation with the ordinance officer even when he came by. That was over a year ago, and I haven't heard anything from him since, so I thought it was a dedication. You see, I believe a lot of this stems from the fact that I had a confrontation with one of my neighbors who threatened to kill one of my animals on multiple occasions. And I had to go to police, I didn't have a choice, what am I supposed to do? And I think it's retaliation. He made a complaint. He didn't tell me that at first, but, you know, I found out, I confirmed it much later on that that was indeed the case, that a complaint was made, but it wasn't very specific, it was general, just I don't like them. We were willing to live and let live after everything, threatening our animals. We just were willing to let them live, but that didn't happen, so we got complaints. We take care of our house. I invite any of you to come down to my house, I'll show you all the product I'm working on. I'm gonna seal coat my driveway this weekend if the spring will stop. I don't care about the Perry Pride Award, how about congratulations, I think it's wonderful. I like people taking care of the house, I like taking care of my house too. You're welcome to come look. We take care of it.
It looks nice, I've been by, it looks very nice.
We take care of ourselves. But we have chickens. You see, houses around here look like they're damn near haunted. Yards haven't been mowed but maybe three times all summer, but they don't have chickens. How is that right? That's not justice. We do everything we can. Now, if you've ever had chickens, then you might know some of the benefits of them. There's a lot of benefits to having chickens. It greatly reduces waste by tons. In fact, there was a town in Belgium that had an experiment where they gave 2,000 residents three chickens each. And guess what? Waste was reduced by literal tons. Stores had to stop selling eggs. All the, the chickens give you a much better product, you know where it comes from. It's not coming from some giant factory with a forest lane all day and then sprayed with chemicals. They're not mistreated, we love our chickens. Darth Leia is great. They're entertaining. I have a son who, we see the traumatic brain injury as a child. He's now an adult physically. He comes over, first thing he wants to do is, where's the chickens, I wanna go play with them. He'll spend hours out there just petting them, playing with them, feeding them. They're educational. That, we have an FFA program in Perry, but we can't teach our kids about how to do such things at home. That would be uncalled for.
Chris, I'm sorry to have to stop you about your five minutes.
Yeah, I understand. I can go on, but.
And that was a lot of good information, we appreciate that. Thank you for being here. Does anyone else want to step forward for any reason?
I do.
And your name?
Samantha Klut. Um, I stand before you tonight to address a pressing concern that has impacted not only just my family, but potentially many others in our community. Last Tuesday evening, following a powerful storm, a large branch from a tree in the city easement fell onto our wood fence. The impact was jarring, not only the loud crash, but the immediate damage to our property and the subsequent shock of seeing our neighbors gathering outside to assess the situation. I'm deeply grateful for our wonderful neighbors who came out to notify us about the damage, demonstrating the true spirit of community. Our street was affected by the tornado that struck last August. The utility poles along our road, with the exception of two, were snapped by the storm. A guy wire on the pole in our backyard was a sole support for the utility pole across the street from our house. Two mature trees across the street from us were also broken at the trunk base. Despite the severe damage, it seems that no city personnel came by to inspect these trees before the city decided to relinquish responsibility for them in December. On Wednesday afternoon, as we began the process of having the damaged tree removed, we discovered a notice stuck inside our storm door. This notice informed us that the Department of Public Works would not pick up any brush resulting from the tree removal by a contractor. This was kind of surprising. No one from the city had knocked on our door or consulted us about what we planned to do with the tree. When I reached out to DPW last Thursday for clarification on how we could handle the brush, heard the piece of paper that I was handed in my door, I did not receive a response, nor have I heard from DPW to date. We had no choice but to handle the situation ourselves. We made arrangements to transport the brush and to pay to dispose of it. The tree was split all the way down to the base of the trunk, and I have ample photographic evidence. Or you can drive by my house and see the trunk that's now having to sit in my yard into pieces. It literally broke into pieces while we put it in the backyard. I worry for other families who may not have the resources or means to manage such situations, particularly if they find themselves in similar circumstances without adequate support from the city. It seems profoundly unfair that the city spent so many years dictating what residents can and cannot do with those trees only to relinquish responsibility with minimal notice. I understand that these matters were discussed in a previous meeting, but the general public may not always be aware or understand these details. We cannot all attend every meeting, nor do we get compensated to monitor city decisions. It is vital for the city to provide clear communication and ensure that residents are well informed. Given that silver maples, the species in question, are known for their maintenance challenges, including susceptibility to high winds and ice, as well as their potential damaging root systems, I urge the council to consider more thorough evaluations of these trees. Silver maples, while beautiful, come with their own set of issues that need to be addressed proactively. Their location between city sidewalks and near water mains and sewer lines exacerbates the problem. On a positive note, the community spirit we experienced in dealing with the aftermath of the storm was heartwarming. We were fortunate enough to have numerous individuals and groups step forward to help clean up. Their support was invaluable and a testament to the strong sense of community that we have here. It is this kind of generosity and neighborliness that makes our city truly special. In conclusion, I ask that the city council reexamine the city's policies regarding tree maintenance and removal to ensure that residents are better supported in times of crisis. Clear communication and responsible tree management will benefit all of us and help prevent future hardships.
Thank you, Samantha. Anyone else have anything they'd like to bring? Chris?
I don't know how this is gonna go. Chris West, I'd like to say, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but in the right to be. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever." Amen.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Alexandria. So, we moved here back in 22.
And I'm sorry, Alexandria, your last name?
KASSA FOGAR.
Could you spell that for me? S-O-G?
F-O-G-A-R-T-Y.
A-R-T-Y, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, we moved here in 22. We heard about the chickens recently, and I grew up in Perry, went to the schools, mow, like, I'd help a lot of people. So, when I found out about the chickens, I got two boys. One is gonna be eating soon, and I got two acres in town. And apparently, I can't have chickens on my property.
I pay taxes. Are you zoned residentially or agriculturally then?
Residential.
You have two acres.
I'm right down the road, on Lamb Street.
And you have two acres?
Yes. So, when I found out about the chickens through the Perry Community Page, I was kind of shocked that we can't do that. So, I'm kind of, I don't know, flabbergasted, so to speak, because in the past, I've seen people have chickens. Down by the fire station, there's chickens wandering around. So, for us citizens here, being told that we can't have chickens, and then some people have come forward and said that they have gotten ordinances, they've had chickens.
You mean they've had citations, is that what you mean?
Yeah, so why all of a sudden are they getting citations now, when they've had the chickens? I'm just kind of disappointed, because the city of Lansing has chickens.
We're not the city of Lansing.
I understand that, but we are a rural town, just like Morris.
We're a city, and we do have zoning ordinances and we have.
I understand that.
Communicated ordinances, and that's within the ordinance. So, I hear what you're saying, and I'll go ahead and let me finish, but.
Well, I'm kind of mad.
You don't just willy-nilly say, okay, all of a sudden you can't have chickens, that's not.
Well, then why are people getting citations?
Because they can't have chickens, and it's been in the.
You're not making any sense, ma'am.
No, I am. It's been in the ordinance, in the zoning ordinance since 1988, that you can't have chickens in the city of Perry.
So, all of a sudden, that's a problem?
No, it's not. It's been a problem since 1988, believe me.
People have had chickens since 1988, and now all of a sudden people are getting citations. So, either you're looking at these certain people with chickens?
No, we're not looking at certain people, we're looking at anybody with chickens. They're not supposed to have them in the city.
This is a farm community?
No, it's not.
The gentleman just said, we have an FFA at Perry High School.
That's right, and the.
How are we supposed to teach our children? How are we supposed to teach our children about animals?
Join the FFA and have them at the FFA bar.
Do you know how much that makes sense, ma'am?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Not really, no, not really. What's the point of having an FFA then?
You've got about a minute, so if you.
Actually, she should have additional time with your interruptions.
Exactly.
Well, I'll let you have an additional five minutes, that, would you like that?
Yes.
Keep going, go right ahead.
I understand your point, I really do, but this is a rural city. We are surrounded by farmland. You go to Morris, they have farmland, they have an FFA as well. They are allowed chickens. You see chickens everywhere. So, how is it that we can't even have chickens when we're in town and we have acreage, as you are, two acres, when they're not bothering anyone, they're pulled up in an area that we have? They're not going in anyone's yard, they're not doing anything. I don't even have a rooster. And you're telling me we can't have chickens? That doesn't make any sense!
The ordinance is telling me that, I'm.
Okay, but it hasn't, no one's really cared until recently. So, why is it even in the books when no one has exercised that through all these years? Does that make sense to you? Because it doesn't to me. I know family members that have had chickens and they live in Perry. So, it's kind of disappointing to hear that, because I grew up in this city, and now it seems moving to Perry is just being a hassle, because we can't have our choices of what we do on our land. You can laugh, but I don't think it's funny. I think it's really frustrating. Being a citizen, I pay my taxes, I even got a frickin' water line replaced, and now my water bill's higher since that got taken care of. I paid $10 more on that, and you're telling me I can't have frickin' chickens in my property? That's just ridiculous. And I think I speak for everyone that we should be allowed to do whatever we want, especially if our property is clean, we keep it well-kept compared to other houses around here. I'm just really disappointed. I'd like to see it changed, but probably won't. Thank you.
We appreciate what you've had to say.
I don't think you do, since you laughed.
Well, I was only laughing because I've heard that related to me several times, it's just.
I think it's disrespectful.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to be disrespectful to you or to anyone. Anyone else here to speak? And I'll have to tell you, after this, we have to go into closed session. So, if there's anyone else that wants to speak after this, young lady, you'll have to wait till after closed session is done.
My name is Angela Teichman, and I'm fairly new to Perry. I moved here in 2022, and I got, I need clarification, because I'm new to this whole ordinance thing. So, number one thing I want to ask is, according to what you just told the previous speaker, you cannot have chickens, no matter how much land you own, if you're in the city limits? Am I understanding that correctly?
If you zone residential.
Okay. How do you know what you're zoned? That's the other question, because I know some people were asking.
You can stop in the City Hall and we'd be happy to look it up for you. It should say it though on your tax bill, if you look on your tax bill.
And I guess I also am frustrated, because I am paying like an insane amount of property tax to live within city limits, which is crazy, because it just keeps going higher and higher, along with other bills, which everything is going on. But I feel like if I owned that, the land, and I pay my property taxes, and I upkeep my property, then I should be able to have a few chickens if I felt any desire. I don't see why I would be told that, no, you can't have chickens. I just feel that that's ridiculous. I feel like, you know, this is like overstepping people's freedoms and rights, and as a citizen of the town here, I definitely am considering relocating. And I know other people are selling, if you're paying attention to real estate, there's a lot of people moving out of the city. There's people moving in, but that's a big part. And then I've heard that people are getting citations for having RVs in their driveways too, which isn't related to chickens, but still, it's a personal freedom. I'm not understanding why the city is thinking they're an HOA. They are not. And I feel like you guys are taking that a step further, maybe not you personally, but I just feel like it's not okay. I'm not supporting that very. That's all I have to say.
Counsel, I'm looking for a motion to move into closed session.
Move that council move into closed session to discuss police negotiations.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second. Jeez.
Larry? We'll take a roll call vote, please. It's been moved by Mike, seconded by Larry, that council moves into the closed session. That's on our agenda for 7:20.
Jake Puffer.
Here.
Larry.
It's a vote.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mary Lambert?
Yes.
Bob Porter?
Yes.
Chad Fuller?
Yes.
Mike Connell?
Yes.
Motion passes, council will move into closed session. You folks are welcome to wait here, and we'll be out as quickly as we can.
Go ahead, make a motion that we move back into regular session.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob, that we move back into regular session. Roll call vote, please. Shirley?
Jacob Puffer?
Here.
Larry?
Yes.
Larry Lambert?
Yes.
Uh, Bob Porter?
Yes.
Chad Fuller?
Yes.
Mike Connell?
Yes.
Returning to regular session at 7:36. Okay, so we'll move right back into where we were, and that was with public comment. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Yes. And your name is?
Deanna Shaw. Sorry. I'm concerned about the chickens, the backyard chickens, I really am. Um, I don't know if anybody's aware, but there's been two chicken farms, factories shut down in Michigan because of bird flu. My question is, who's gonna regulate these backyard chickens if they're allowed? And then do not, I see that. But who's gonna regulate them for bird flu? It's already passed on to humans, they've got three cases so far. That is really my main concern, you know, besides the smell and all that stuff, but. I just am not seeing chickens in town, you know, if you want chickens and livestock and stuff, you know, move to the country, you know, I'm not trying to be mean, but let's be real here, you know? So, yeah, I don't think we should have chickens.
Thank you, Deanna.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? For any reason, yes, or no?
Someone else?
I'm gonna address our rights as citizens.
Could I ask your name, please?
Matthew Shepard, Perry Township. In the Declaration of Independence, which most of us should know, if we don't, by George, you ought to learn it, the First Amendment says, "Congress shall make no law respecting any establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or the freedom of press, or the right of people peacefully assembled and petition the government for redress of grievances." In Matthew 28, verse 18 through 20, Jesus came to them and spoke, saying, "All authority has been given to me in heaven and on earth. Go therefore and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe that all commanded you, and lo, I am with you always, even to the end of the age." I'll also bring up the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and also amended in 1995, that restricts anybody from being discriminated for religious or other beliefs. So, if someone comes up here and wants to pray, that's their right, and you have a duty to oblige that right. If not, force action could be brought against anyone that restricts someone of their rights. And that's in U.S. Code, Act 18. It's all in it. If you violate your oath of office by not upholding the Constitution, you are guilty of treason. There should be no question about it. I'm a chaplain, I can pray if I want. Pastor Deena's a pastor, she volunteered, and you guys rejected it. That's on you. Smile, joke, laugh, whatever you want, Ms. Hammond. You're wrong.
Yep.
Yep.
Matthew, thank you for all you had to say.
I didn't think it was up yet.
Do you have more? I'm sorry, it sounded like you were finished.
If anybody has any questions, they can consult me afterwards, either anyone on the board or anyone in the public. You have the right to do as God has granted you, with a life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness. I'll just mention one more thing about the chickens. I mean, if someone has chickens, it's probably because they're a little too expensive at the store to buy eggs. I know, I wouldn't pay no $9 for brown eggs. If you don't think that's right, go up to Kroger sometime, or over here to IGA. A can of beaning weenies used to cost maybe 50 cents. I've seen them lately at five or $5 or more. So, don't restrict somebody's right. So don't restrict somebody's rights to have what they have while they're paying taxes to you folks. You're obligated to the public, not them to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address during public comment?
Step aside of the chicken for a second. My name is Mark Lincut, Green Street, Grand Thorough. Your Honor, is there any truth to what Mrs. Klug spoke of earlier about the trees on the easement being our responsibility?
They are on your property. They are-
Is that easement our property?
Yes, it is.
It is? It is our property?
Yes.
Okay, then I would like to make, I would like for the city council to write me a check for about five grand because I will not be taking care of the sidewalk anymore. I'm going to cover it with dirt because it's on my property now. I'm going to cover it with dirt and plant grass seed.
And in, has been granted for that sidewalk to be there.
But it's on my property.
It is your property, but the easement was granted-
You owe me money.
No, we don't.
Yeah, you do. You went to, you can talk to any lawyer.
And you can talk to ours.
Okay. The other thing is-
Contact us when we're in and I'll give you his address and his contact information.
And, you know, and I would love to do that, but you and your police force and your DPW, that's kind of made it hard to trust anybody in this city government.
Well, if you'd like to somehow give me-
You'll say, I've got the floor, ma'am. You'll say one thing in New Orleans. You can, if somebody can come down to my house, tell me that he's going to do this and he's going to do that. And when I tell him, no, you're not. No, you most certainly are not. And then I get a little upset and call him a few names. And he runs down to the police department, makes up some crap story. And then I got, then I get a charge thrown at me for molesting and hindering a public worker. And all I did was told him to get off my porch, that he, his crew, and his equipment were not going to be on my property. That side of the sidewalk, do whatever you want to do, brother. But now that we own from the curbside of the road all the way back, that sidewalk is on my property and I would like it taken care of financially or come down and rip it up. Thank you. That's all I got. That's all I'm going to say.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move out of public comment into communications. Shirley, do you have any communications?
I've handed out the national IDO, which is next Tuesday from 5 to 8 up here at City Hall, a letter from the CVP, and then attorney correspondence.
That's it? We'll move then into reports from department heads. Megan, would you like to go first?
Good evening. I reported last time I was here that the audit would be the week of August, that it was called. So for the auditors last week, they had shifted their schedule, they postponed one week. So they'd be onsite, doing their onsite work beginning Monday, I think it's the 19th. I've been working on preparing year-end wrap-up and a list of things that they'd require to see ahead of time, so I've been getting off that this week. Taxes went out before the 1st of July, everything went smoothly. I have ordered some more equipment for the playground project that was crowdfunded. So we have, site work was done this last week. We're ready to start installing the playground. And then we started ordering some of the other, and the playground equipment has also been delivered. And then we started ordering some of the other stuff, like the benches and other items that were part of the crowdfunding rewards, I guess we can call them, for different door levels. That's pretty much all I have for you, it's Mike.
Counsel, any questions for Megan? Thank you, Megan.
Just wanted to report on the generator project. That was the grant-funded project for safety and security for this building and things throughout the city. The generator project, the concrete is poured, the conduits are run, the transfer switch is in place. And we have a delivery date of September for the generator. So we should have that in ahead of schedule. The door locks, the key entry or the card entry, they're still waiting for products to be delivered. They have done some preliminary work on that project. They've granted some, some wires to certain locations in the building. So we're just waiting for the hardware to be delivered in that project. Should move forward pretty quickly. I'm working with the state of Michigan Eagle. We had some lead copper samples come back higher than, than average. It put us over the limit for, for copper. When we investigated those, why those samples were higher than the rest, the sampling procedure was not followed. So I'm working with Eagle on what to do in that situation. So we had to have some programming done at the water treatment plant with the backwash sequence. I'm happy to report that Midwest Tree has started prepping the brush for grinding. They were here, supposed to be two days this week, piling up all of the brush and debris from the tornado last year. So they're, it's supposed to be here next week to do the brush grinding. So there's movement on the mountain brush. If I could speak to the lady on Green Street for a moment. The next day after the tree fell, my crew showed up to cut it off of the sidewalk and remove this stuff so that the sidewalk would be clear. And before they could even get out of the truck and do anything, there was a crew rolling in with chainsaws and trailers and gear to start taking the tree down. So we felt like we had a pretty handful on it. The reason they left the tag is because anything cut by a contractor, it says in our rules and ordinance that we're not supposed to accept this stuff because we're, the yard waste ordinance was set up for people that want to mow their grass and get rid of the grass clippings, trim a few branches so they can mow, pick up sticks before they mow. It wasn't meant for bulk wood items. And if we didn't have all of the storm damage piled up in the mountain of brush to deal with already, I would have said, bring in all of them.
But you didn't say anything.
And I apologize for not getting back to you right away.
It's been a week.
I've, I've had a busy time and that's no excuse, but I apologize for not calling you back right away.
Thank you.
And that's on me. So it seems like we got a handle on it. I had my guys go chip the brush that was stacked out by the road on chipping day and-
And that was solely from the branch because, like I said, it should have been taken by the city. We, we hired someone to have them come out because I anticipated getting a ticket for blocking the sidewalk. Like, that's the kind of community that I get from the city is I'm blocking the sidewalk, I'm going to get a ticket within 24 hours of not having the sidewalk cleared. That's not how this community should work. It shouldn't be-
I should have touched base with you in the beginning. Again, I apologize, but we were there, we were going to cut the sidewalk clear and haul the pieces away so that you could take your time to clean it up and it didn't have to be done overnight. So I guess the conversation probably would have made you feel a lot better about that.
It would.
And I apologize.
I anticipated getting a ticket, so.
And then if I could speak to the parking at the library. It was requested that a closed spot to the door, they made handicap. I think it was brought up at the last meeting. When I contacted the ADA, they recommended whether we're in violation or not, just paint the lines, put the sign up because it's cheaper than a lawsuit. So that's what we did. We painted the line, we put the sign up, we painted a crosswalk to the library. That was completed today.
Thank you.
Any of you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Kevin. Shirley?
I'm just reporting that the election is on Tuesday, August 6th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Coming to vote down here, same day as the national IDO, so. See, I'll be in the office on August 3rd, which is Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00. And August 4th, Sunday, from 12:00 to 2:00, to answer any questions or just be available for voters. And that's pretty much, our pavilion is coming along. We have all of our concrete poured. They have the skirt poured all around it. They're working on preparing the roofing. And they have started the electrical today, yesterday. So it's moving forward.
That's it? Police chief is on vacation this week, so no report from him today. He didn't give you anything to report on? I do just want to point out to counsel that I did put a copy of the SEDP letter talking about the availability of some money from the Cook Foundation for grants and application for grants, I should say. So please review that. And then in follow-up to that, at our meeting last week, we did talk about creating a grant team to work on seeking grants for different areas of need that we have here in the city. If there's anyone in the public, in the city, city residents who would like to serve on that team, please let me know. I do have some webinar information that was put out and I am happy to share that with you if you're interested in being on the team. Just reminding you too, that the governor did sign the new fiscal year 2025 state budget. And in that state budget, there is money earmarked for the city of Perry to receive in relation to recovery from our tornado damage. We did also receive a request from our fire chief, Trent Atkins, regarding a new Boca National Fire Prevention Code to replace our one that's on file now. I have sent that over to our city attorney to review and in communication with Trent about some questions on that. Reminding you that the waste management possibility of recycling, that's on the ballot for August 6th, correct?
Yes.
Yes. That's in November. Do be thinking about whether you'd like to have curbside recycling added and that's on the November ballot. And we talked about the handicap spot. We do have counsel some court activity pending for 422 East Second Street for nuisance violations that have been ongoing. And I did get recent communication from our city attorney about those dates being set up for that. Just so you're aware. Let me just look at my notes and see if I got it all. Oh. In the creation of the handicap spot, the second handicap spot in the parking lot behind the library, there's been considerable complaint about losing a parking spot. And so I'm wondering, counsel, if you would agree that maybe we need to have DPW evaluate that space that the city owns that's behind the McQueen House, north of the McQueen House and goes almost to the driveway of the house next to it for possibly making that into additional parking? McQueen House could still use it for their gatherings, for their markets and things like that. We can just close it off during that time. But it would give us additional parking if we want DPW to measure that off and evaluate it and get a cost on it and just see what you think. What do you think? Shall we do that?
I think we should at least explore and see whether or not it's feasible.
Kevin, would you put that on your to-do list?
Yes.
And, oh, I did want to extend appreciation to candidates who are running for office for mayor and for counsel. I think it's wonderful that we do have an adequate number of people running to fill those spots. I would ask you though, to be aware of this. The community of Perry was incorporated as a village in 1893. In 1964, citizens voted to adopt the city charter and create the city of Perry. On September 8th, 1964, city of Perry residents elected their first city government. The city of Perry is a home role city governed by a six-member council and mayor. Election of all city officers is on a nonpartisan basis. That's why it's not on the primary. Please, if you are running, please, please take time to review the charter. It's just a small portion of this huge book. And you don't have to read it out of the book. It's available online. It's on the city website. On the very first page, there's buttons that you can touch and it says charter ordinances. Just click on that, go to the left, click on charter. And please read that because there's some very important information. And important to know, especially because, speaking of oaths, in your oath of office, when you are elected, you have to take this oath of office to be formally made into council member or mayor. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Michigan, the charter and ordinances of the city of Perry, and I will faithfully perform the duties as elected council member/mayor according to the best of my ability, so help me God. That is the oath you'll be required to take before you can take your office. So please review the charter. Review the ordinances, review the zoning ordinance. Because if you're not willing to uphold these things, you can't take this oath. You can't fill your office. That's all of my reports. Do we have any committee reports?
Just to note that the ordinance committee will be meeting next Thursday, the 8th, at 10:00 a.m. Here in Council Chambers. And I just want to make a point of clarity. The ordinance committee is basically a work group. I've had some people think that because we're meeting during the day that we're doing something behind closed doors. That's not the case at all. It's just a work group to put some proposals together. Any decisions regards ordinances, modifications to, expansion of, come here before council multiple times. You're going to see later on the agenda that there is a first reading that occurs, discussion, and then subsequently, if there's any issues, it may go back for further review. But ultimately comes in here for any approval.
Can I say something on that?
Yes.
So it also goes to our attorney before he even comes here?
Yes, good point.
The ordinance committee though, even though it's during the day, it's open?
It is an open activity, yes. It is an open activity.
So you're all welcome to come and express your concerns?
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
Next, next Thursday here in-
Mark, but you're only a chief who worked full-time jobs.
I understand that. That's why we're trying to accommodate the folks that are on the, on the committee with their work schedule, their personal schedules. And I wanted to emphasize that all of the actual decisions and any activity that's taken happening here, that's simply a work group, certainly welcome to come, attend, participate, but no-
I didn't leave work early to come here tonight.
Chris?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't come and throw over, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to say, you said you had something written up. If you wanted to give that to Larry, he's the chairman of the ordinance committee, he would make copies of that and make sure that committee members got it and they could review it just as though you were here. We're welcome. Anyone's welcome to do that if you would like.
I think, I think I heard right, thank you.
Yes.
For future, would you guys consider moving that time? So more people would be able to offer input? Because 10:00 a.m. is not really working for a lot of people as this economy is getting worse and we kind of have to have two incomes for most households?
worse, and we kind of have to have two incomes for most households?
I'll certainly have some discussion at the next week's committee meeting and see whether everybody's schedule would allow that to reasonably happen. I understand your concern, so we'll, we'll take a look at it and see.
Well, I think a lot of people would appreciate that.
That's all.
Thank you. Any other committees reporting? Moving on to presentation and approval of the bills.
Whether we approve the bills aren't as presented and here to be offered.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Not seeing anything in old business. We have moved through number one of our new business, so moving on to number two, possible adoption of the police union contract.
I move that the Perry City Council adopt and ratify a tentative agreement reached with the Police Officers Labor Council for a new collective bargaining agreement to commence July 1st, 2024, and will terminate on June 30th, 2028. Be it further moved that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign the new collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the city.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Number three on our agenda is the possible first reading of zoning amendment 396. This is a revision, section 3.23, storage and parking of recreational vehicles, utility trailers, and equipment.
Just a comment clarification here. This one, we had some conversation in, I believe, our last meeting, and we went back and made some modifications in the Department of Ordnance Committee, and so we're bringing it back again with those modifications.
I went back and read what's in there now, and I don't see why we're changing it all. It seems to be pretty clear and concise, and this is actually, does this have limits? This is what we have now, and there's no limits. You're changing from three feet to five feet. I did check with the fire chief to see if there was something in the fire codes, and he couldn't find anything. I really just don't understand why we're going to change this when it doesn't need to be.
It came as a result of discussion from our ordinance enforcement officer before I asked her one of the last ordinance meetings, Bob.
There's an issue with parking RVs?
No, there was a question about utility. We didn't have anything in there on utility trailers. It's fully, strictly RVs, boats and RVs, and also a question about how many could they have on the property, side lots, et cetera. You'll see in here that currently on the books.
That's two.
It's two in total. This proposal removes the number in total and defines how many could have in the side yard, how many could have on the driveway.
They changed the limits of how close it can be to any building, not just a dwelling, which this says, any building. So people who haven't had, so you got to remember, this is an old city in a lot of areas, and people don't have much space. So they may have 14 feet from the house to the property line. A RV is eight-foot wide on average. You don't have the space to put it next to it. So basically, you're saying you can't put a RV here. Then you also in there, you have ownership. Proof of owner has to be the owner, owner has to be the resident or owner of the house. Why? And who's going to police it? If I let my son park something in my house, or my father, or my mother, or whoever, what is the business of the city? And who's going to come and check the registration if it's owned by me or not? We have a limit. There should be a limit. I don't disagree with having a limit. Two or three? Five? Six? If you want to add utility trailer to what we have right now, that's fine, but I think that we're really starting to get into pushing people where who's going to come check it if it's parked in my backyard? I don't think they have the right to come in my backyard and let me have a registration on it.
It doesn't say they're going to.
No, but, no, but, you know, I have, I have, I've said these things before on the beach. It's a slip or slow. The person we have right now might not do it, but the words say ABC, they're going to go, hey, I can do that. So you're opening the opportunity for people to take advantage of it. I have said this before, haven't I? Everyone on this council has heard me say these things before.
Could you write down your specific ideas about what you think should be or shouldn't be? Because when you pointed a piece of paper and say, here it says this, here it doesn't this, no.
This is a written, spoken, have, this is what we have right now.
And I am recommending that this go back to the ordinance committee again, their meeting, but make a clear.
Okay. This is what I'm going to recommend. We do not change it. I also recommend that the ordinance committee don't send things to the lawyer that costs us money every time he or she refuses it before it comes to the open council, we look at it.
We have to.
Why?
Then why are we looking at every single word? It costs money. We don't have money.
Before the first reading happens, it's required.
We're not going to do it. Yes, the first reading. But can't we give it to the council members and say, this is what we're proposing to do? Look at this and give feedback before we spend money on a lawyer to look at it?
Or we send it to the lawyer?
Why not?
We're going to table this, and we'll look at that possibility, Bob, thank you very much, but please put clear ideas on paper. Give it to him before the ordinance committee. Thank you very much.
This is what I'm proposing. I will write it down, that we do not change the ordinance, period.
You can have a seat. Call to order.
Mayor, I'm not, this, me is not any different than any other day when I bring things up. Everyone should know that, has never been to this meeting. So I don't know why you get upset at me when I bring up the same thing and I bring up what I think is silliness, okay? And I don't think I have to give him a written request about an ordinance.
But if we are reviewing.
Because then it's just, you're doing whatever you want.
Amen.
Amen. I'm sorry, but it's.
Please, people, point of order. I'm just asking if you would please write it down and give us the ordinance committee can't read it.
But I don't think that's required that I have to do that, but I will do that. I do think it's required.
Then don't do it. Whatever you want to do, Bob, whatever you want to do.
I appreciate anything you could give me, Bob, because the question came up, the ordinance committee didn't invent just going willingly to change an ordinance. It came as a result of questions.
Add utility, if there's a problem with utility trailer, add utility trailer to this, this ordinance. There's one I restrict it to, three instead of two, fine. But this covers everything that you, you chose this to be more restrictive in some regards and less restrictive in others. So I can have 20 in my backyard as long as I own them all. So I could buy them, register my name, they're titled in my name, and then put them up for sale, right?
No, that's a business, and you can't do that. You know.
Provide me whatever.
I can sell and buy and sell things if I want.
It's like a lot in your yard.
There is no, right now, this, this proposal has no limits, so not change an ordinance. So if I have, if I buy it with a title in my name, it doesn't say I can't have more than.
If you can't control your comments, you're going to have to be.
If, if I buy five, title in my name, there's no restrictions, and I can't have five. If I want to sell them, I can sell them as an individual.
Can we move on? Can I have a motion?
I move to table the ordinance 396.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we'll revisit that after ordinance reviews. And next is possible adoption of zoning amendment 397, chapter three, section 3.14. And this has been through a first reading already.
This has been through a first reading, and basically the proposed modification that was read last, last meeting was the clarification relative to carports allowed. There was a definition of carports in the ordinance, but had no information or reference to whether we would or would not allow them, what the restrictions were. That reading did in fact happen. I move that zoning ordinance amendment 397, section 3.14, accessory building structures and uses, which was read during the July 18th, 2024 regular council meeting, be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the possible approval of the Green Street sewer lining. Kevin, would you like to bring any information regarding that?
Just as, we've noticed during our normal maintenance checks, we've had the jet aligned a few times due to some backups. It backed up one time into a residence basement, so we would like to get it re-lined so that we don't have those issues anymore in that section. This is a budgeted item, looking for council approval.
I move that we approve the quote from SAC for the Green Street Sewer Line Project. The amount not to exceed $36,600. We authorize Kevin Tyler, DPW supervisor, to sign the contract.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
We do open our meeting again at this time under any other business that may come before council. If anyone else would like to make any public comment, again, the limit of five minutes would apply.
I have a separate subject may make a comment.
You may want to step to the podium? Christopher, right?
Yes. Just a comment on this, on this debate about carports. I think just as a general feeling, I can speak for many, many people where, don't tell me what I can keep in my house. Don't tell me how I can store stuff. That doesn't seem very good. Again, I call it on liberty, but people can do what they want on their property. What's wrong with storing something off-season? Maybe I, you know, you have a boat you want to store over the winter, kayaks. My house, obviously, they did that previously. Now personally, I just do my carport to park it. That's just me, though. But I'm not going to fault anybody else for doing, using their carport for how they want. Maybe you don't have a garage to store stuff in it. What's your default? You have a carport. You don't want to get covered in with rain and snow, but you don't have a garage. What are you supposed to do? Right? People, people just don't like being told how to, how to live. That simple.
Anyone else for further public comment? Counsel discussion, I do have something I'd like to bring up and discuss with counsel, and I'll pass these out, because perhaps some of you don't have them. I'm specifically looking at page five, reporting responsibilities, but over to the top of page six in that paragraph. "All appointive officers of the city shall perform duties as are provided for such officers by state law, charter, city charter ordinances, administrative directives of the council." And that's what this is, Perry City Council Rules of Procedure. Just reminding council that no action contrary thereto shall, to shall be valid or binding upon any appointive officer or employee of the city. No member of council shall give orders to any appointive officer or employee either publicly or privately, except by official action by the council properly convened, except that the mayor pro town may do so in the absence of the mayor and subject to review by the mayor upon his or her return. That leads me to a discussion of creating a new committee to work with the DPW to develop a program of some type that would enable the city to better dispose of city-owned, city residents' owned trees and brush. Bob, I believe you had a discussion with Kevin about that?
Yes.
And maybe you can explain a little better what type of committee that should be.
Well, I, I was shocked, actually, that Kevin told me that we basically ran out of room at DPW in our yard. And it's just because of, over the years, of however many, 50, 60 years, whatever it's been, people have dumped things and it hasn't been disposed of. So I think we need to look at how to, one, control what we have, and then get it to a manageable size, and then how we control from that point. And I haven't looked, I tried to drive back there, but the gate was locked the other day, so to kind of look at it. I have no idea what it would take to get it even to a reasonable pile. I know that barring the tornado debris, that's different, but there's, I guess there's piles of broken concrete, there's brush, there's all kinds of things, so.
How many people?
I'd be happy to be on that committee and try to.
How many people do you think you would need?
Well, more is worse, but I would like to get multiple disciplines, people that come from different areas. I'd say five to six would need more. I'll be one, Kevin, for sure. The people who come from different areas and disciplines always help. They have a different perspective of management.
So counsel, give this some thought, see if that's something you'd be interested in sitting on that committee, and members of the public, if you would like to sit on that committee as public representation, please let me know. Thank you very much. Any other business, counsel, that we need to talk about, address, or place on the agenda for next meeting? It's 8:20. This meeting's adjourned.